Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show that today is May 29, 2020, and the time is 9:00 a.m. Finally, after I don't know how many weeks, I would ask if you would join me as I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would also mention that we are live streaming our commissioner meeting today as well as allowing folks to call in via the teleconference. I will give you that number in case you happen to be listening and were not able to pick that phone number up. The phone number is (503) 300-6854 with the conference code of (940) 104. So hopefully, anybody who wants to join this meeting via teleconference can certainly call in. So with that, I would ask the clerk to the board to conduct the roll call, please.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Audience introductions. We'll start here in the room and then we'll go to the teleconference.
I'm Kara Evans, VOC sign and then assistant.
Vernon Ross, IT.
And anyone on the phone would like to introduce themselves, please do so.
This is Alyssa Lytham, I don't know.
Uh, hold on. I got Alyssa. I did not hear the second one.
Sorry, I stepped on Alyssa. It's Elliot from the Tribune.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy Fowler.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Welcome. Good morning, everybody. Nice to have you. We'll move on. Any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Kanda?
None from me.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve. You have been provided copies of those April 7, April 15, and April 21.
I move that.
I move we accept the minutes April 7, 15, and 21.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We move to second to accept the minutes of April 7, April 15, and April 21. Discussion. Appreciate Kelly working on those. I know she has been upside down on all of her work and so she's been diligently hammering out these minutes, probably not during the workday either.
I'm getting there.
Yeah, so thank you. Appreciate it. Further discussion? Hearing the note, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as aforementioned, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Kanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries. Those minutes have been approved. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Kanda, why don't you go ahead, if you would, please?
Okay, since our last board meeting was on the 20th, we did have a public health meeting which went well. We received our variances and have implemented those variances, getting businesses started, which gives a lot of activity to our task force that's working economic recovery task force. Several of those meetings we have had and a lot of progress being made. Looks like we'll have another board of health meeting as a result of hopefully new guidance from the state, either on the first or shortly thereafter that we're expecting. So we have scheduled another board of health meeting for the fourth after the D O C C meeting at 1:00 on the fourth. Additionally, I've been doing a lot of talking with the airport guys who have been working the AWAS program. Couple things that have come up there just to bring you up speed. Nothing drastic except that CDOT aviation group, Caitlin, gave us a call. We had a discussion with her. Turns out that because of the time and the costs have increased, the actual cost that they were given that we had on the system, the AWAS system itself is 50,000 bucks short of the actual cost. And so what we're working with CDOT right now is they're gonna, they're working rather than spare funds that are left over and reallocating them. And this is a high priority. So they're, I'm gonna ask enough to pull together what we can as an end kind match on work because they're not asking us to supply money upfront, which is a good thing. But they want some good state from us. So what we're working together with Lynn, Brian, and the airport board working hard at working how we will execute putting in a trench for the power to get a ditch which out there or just one of the other couple of things that would get us up to what our menu. I might be looking for around 5,000 bucks a piece. Also getting a bit from Sangre de Cristo for the, what they charge us to do it, which is what we use as our matching tank. That's probably gonna run eight to 10,000 bucks. It's a 3,400 foot trench we've got to put in. So that's a good new part of we've got a process to do it. They'll meet with Caitlin on Tuesday to discuss that. They have Fridays when they allocate the money and put it out to you guys and others that are caught short here. So that's the status on that for now. Additionally, I've been working the fiber and of course, the tire project, who can be regularly on the towers a couple, three times a week initially and now they three, twice a week with the fiber broadband tower program. Right now we're working hard at getting the agreement nailed down on the legislative spot for the power to be placed, dealing with the programs, dealing with the landowners directly and working options if they do or do not agree. We've got several good options there is next one if they do not come through. And we have other areas that can be under consideration. So we've got plenty of time to deal with that, working as it is an issue though, that keep an eye on this. All three of us have been, the commissioners have been attentive in those, just to make sure things are cooking. Additionally, I've worked with Carmel has been, the virus has kind of closed up since our meeting on the fourth. However, things are breaking loose now and so I sent you all the copy of the CDOT agreement. I needed, I need to work with them. We agreed in our meeting to proceed with the intergovernmental agreement with them. And so this needs to go through the process of ex, we don't want to have that be a tall hole. So I sent you all a copy to take a look at. It doesn't require a vote in my mind, but it does require coordination without the two towns have got the same documents and they have already agreed to proceed if we decide on the focal point for the program. So that's right there. We can talk about that at the end of the meeting if you'd like. And I also sent a speed check document. It was part of our discussions for the program. And I included burning on it in the meeting we all had earlier. We agreed we put it on the website and get it out in a notice. And I'm gonna try to get a copy, put it in the newspaper as well. We'll discuss that afterwards. But it's just a simple request for people to provide a speed check, follow the directions, and then send it in so that we can get documented for the program's speed anywhere in the valley. You'll see that in the packet earlier in my email to you. I sent two emails earlier. And finally, I was working with the budget looks pretty good. There's certainly a big budget item in there that we're glad to have and that's the dump truck or the, it's gonna be a water truck because we should have that from what I understood yesterday, today or tomorrow. I don't know if you all heard anything else that came out of here this morning. I don't know if we've gotten it delivered yet. Just supposed to be sending them. And then Tom, you mentioned a box scraper of some kind. I wasn't able to find out what it is, but did you?
Yes, I followed up on that with Gary Hyde. It's called a road groom. They've got a piece of equipment, that piece of equipment here in the county on a demo project. I spoke with Gary this morning about it. He's very, very pleased with the results. It's done a good job. I went and looked at the piece of equipment this morning as well. So I'm sure he'll be coming to the commissioners to talk about that further.
Yep, you're right. These roads have a lot of rock to be carried out of, out of blade holes up to that. Anyway, that's a big summary of what I've been up to since the last meeting and looking forward to the next one on the board.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Prince?
Thanks, sir. I'm not gonna go into detail how many times we've been for the OEM and stakeholder and recovery team. I know we seem to meet three or four times a week on each of those so we ought to have many, many hours put into that at this point. I sent to you both last night, an email I received last night, or I would have sent it sooner, from the recycle folks. They are requesting that CDOT change the signs showing where the sanitary landfill is so that they can have the word recycling in there also. They had asked me if I would approve it and I didn't feel comfortable doing that without bringing it to both of you. So hopefully you saw that email I sent to you. I personally don't have a problem changing it to one that says, instead of just Costa County landfill, the sign will read recycling and landfill. CDOT apparently is fine with the change. And I think that the recycle folks are hoping that we would tell them that's a go ahead. I personally don't have an issue with it, but you guys have it. I hope you read it and so on.
Yeah, I just got that. My question was, Jay, do they want to attach this sign? I thought he said they will, he would be happy to attach it to the existing posts.
Yeah, they're gonna just, what my understanding is that they want to replace the sign that just says landfill to the one that says recycling and landfill so that folks who want to do recycling know where to go.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. If that's what they want to do, I think it's fine. Commissioner Kanda, you have an opinion?
Yeah, I don't have a problem either. I'm just curious. Who is the day recycling act?
I'm sorry. It's a regular committee. Joni Leepman is the chair of that. I attend their meetings when they have them. They're fairly infrequent, maybe three or four a year, but I go to all of them when they have them. So as a point of contact, they sent it to me and I told them I just felt it was, I prefer the three of us make this decision rather than just me.
So that's a county sign that we have to pay for or that was not a state sign?
No, it's state. It's on CDOT right away.
It's a CDOT sign, yeah. And they've agreed to do it if, you know, we just need to give them the go ahead. So by consensus.
I'm fine.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm fine. It sounds good.
Okay, then by consensus, I'll go ahead and I'll tell Joni we're fine with it. Go ahead and make the change.
Yeah, if there are no objections, I'm sorry.
Okay. Alyssa and I did a radio interview with KLZR a little week ago just to kind of update folks on what the variance was. And questions I was hit with was how the county is dealing with the businesses that are having a difficult time right now. And I talked about the various federal state funding that's available. I also spoke about a couple of local grants that we have that could help those folks out. So that's gonna air multiple times. Alyssa, as always, was just terrific in explaining why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it. So that worked out really well. Other than that, I mean, you know, we just, we've been inundated with Zoom and telephone meetings and I get confused on which meeting is what, but they're all for the same thing. It's over the Corona problem, obviously. So that's kind of what I've been up to.
Okay, thank you, sir. I've got some things that I want to bring up other than my calendar. So I'll go through the calendar first. And I'm kind of, Commissioner Prince certainly have been on a number of Zoom and teleconference calls and just trying to stay on top of the Economic Recovery Task Force. We meet twice a week. The Economic Development and Site Selection Company have been meeting once a week to stay updated on the broadband tower project. So certainly have been staying busy in that arena. Trying to figure out here, we did have a board of health meeting as Commissioner Kanda spoke of on the 20th. The policy group meeting continues to meet twice a week as well. So certainly been staying busy with that as we all have. And then I want to talk about three other things that are not on the agenda. I'll just mention them and then we can decide what we want to do moving forward. One of those is a discussion of, and maybe we do this in the board of health, but I wanted to start it here. The commissioners is opening the county building here to some degree more than it is right now. I don't know what that looks like. I don't think we can just unlock the doors and greet everybody with open arms. So I think we need to have a discussion about what that's gonna look like, if and when that's a possibility. The other thing I'd like to talk about, and this probably will end up on a, an agenda item too. We discussed it last meeting about the possibility of leasing a scraper and then having our landfill folk operate that scraper. I've had a couple of discussions about that, Rusty, one with Brian. And then a local contractor reached out and wanted to know if we'd be interested in renting a scraper. So I wonder if we could reach, if we could reach out to, I think there were three local bid submittals and just ask them if they would be willing to rent us a scraper and let our folks run it. I hate to just randomly pick one, cut a deal with them and not have everybody else have an opportunity to at least say yes or no on that and discuss the price or whatever. So I just wanted to have a little discussion about that, see what you guys saw.
What's your third item?
Well, let's go ahead and finish this up and then we'll move on.
Then do you want to talk about opening the county building too? I agree. We need to make a decision on each of these, which I don't think needs to be on the future agenda. We can discuss it now. Do you want to do the scraper?
Okay.
I, I want more request out to the local guys for a scraper and seeing what they'll eat one for and bounce that again because I'm betting they'll do a better deal and we can get it out of town.
Yeah, possibly. The other thing I thought was, and I had this conversation with Brian at landfill, if we did that, we would need an assurance from the contractors that they would cover repair and maintenance as it would if we were to lease one from Four Rivers or CAP equipment. So I thought that was a good point that we don't want to lease a scraper and then something happens to the scraper and we're on the hook for 20 or 30 grand in repair bills. So that would be kind of where I'd come from with it.
Yeah, I would think it would be the same rules as we do from anybody who needs it. We put fuel on it. I'm assuming we put oil on them to whatever it takes to rent one.
Right.
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Prince, your comments?
I think that's an excellent plan. I just don't want to get the county on the hook, like you said, for repairs if there are any. So I think that's definitely a go. I just want to make sure that anybody who owns a scraper has an opportunity to be part of the discussion on renting it or however we do that.
Yeah, and I thought for sure we reach out to the local, maybe go far down as can you to see, but certainly Oklahoma and West Oak, I'm not interested in contacting those folks. But I thought we should honor our local people and at least give them the opportunity to have some input if they're interested. So if it's all right by consent, I'll move forward with that and draft an email and shoot it to those three or four local contractors, see if they're interested.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, the basic premise would be.
Yeah, run that, run who you think they are and make sure we cover everybody.
Well, yeah, and I, I'd rather not make a stab at it till I have a chance to go back and look at all the RFPs, Commissioner Kanda. Because if I say this now, I'll miss somebody.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, so I'll go back and look at those RFPs. I don't think there'd be more than four. The premise of the email would be, we are interested in leasing a scraper from a local contractor. Would you be interested in it? So how much money would you charge to lease a scraper for 30 days?
And cover the maintenance.
And cover the maintenance, correct. Yeah. Okay, then the third thing I had was, I just want to talk about, again, maybe we do this under public comment or whenever it's appropriate. I suppose we could do it now. I would consider moving the June 17 meeting from San Isabel back to the county building here in West Cliff. So would like to hear your thoughts on that.
I think we should do that. We can talk about it now, I think.
Commissioner Prince?
If I remember correctly, the last two meetings we had at San Isabel, the only folks that showed up were basically the same folks that show up when we were open to the public here. So I'm not sure we're accomplishing anything. I hate to exclude the folks out on many some portion of the county, but I think it makes perfectly good sense, especially under the circumstances, to bring it back here. I don't really want to move it out there while there's, you know, while the pandemic and other issues are going on. So I support moving it back here.
Very well. I would, for the record, I would move that we change the location of the June 17, 2020 meeting from San Isabel back to the county building in West Cliff.
I'll second it.
Move to second and change the location of June 17 meeting. Further discussion?
That would be at 9:00 and not at noon.
That's correct. The time would change as well. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Yeah, the meeting was scheduled at noon. I would amend a friendly amendment to the motion to add starting at 9:00 a.m.
I accept the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Thanks, Clint. Hearing the note, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Kanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries. We will move the meeting on June 17 to the county building. Commissioners off of boardroom at 9:00 a.m. Let me make a quick note of that time change so I don't forget. Show up here at noon, I'd be in trouble.
Gentlemen, may I, gentlemen, may I just ask if anyone that is speaking, we cannot hear very well on the survey conference call. Can you move the speaker towards the other person speaking? Commissioner Flower, somebody across the aisle is clear. I can't hear anybody else.
Okay, apologize for that. We have a microphone in front of the teleconference phone and the rest of the people in the room are mic up as well. So I don't know what else we could do about that except maybe speak a little louder and a little more direct into a microphone. I'm sorry that that's the situation. Was this Tracy speaking?
That would be great. Thank you.
Was that Tracy speaking?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Tom, you really seem to have to speak right into the mic.
Yeah.
You cut out if you're turning your head anywhere to the other.
Okay.
And same with Jay.
Right, all right. We will, thank you, Trace, for that input. We will try to do our best. Yeah, so that's, that's basically it for my commissioner items.
Then let's go back.
In the board of health meeting, I think we, we probably need to bring this topic up and visit with Alyssa. Alyssa, if you're on and you have some input about that, I'm certainly sure would allow that.
This is Alyssa. You know, I, I think we just need to be careful with what's coming down the pipe with the governor's orders that are, you know, we have no idea what's gonna happen on Monday.
Correct.
I just lost her.
Yeah.
Are you talking about opening a courthouse?
Yes.
Can I, if you don't mind, I was at the motor vehicle registration and filing and recordings and all that stuff down in Fremont yesterday to file some papers. And they have a very interesting situation, the way they're doing it. Of course, they're bigger and they have more people. But they have a bench as you come in. First of all, everybody has to wear a mask or you don't come in. And then they have a bench with a plexiglass window that you go up to and you space out at least six feet before you're called up to that window. You tell them what, what area of the county building you need to go into. That person determines if there's not already one person there or spaces it out. Kind of a gatekeeper. I thought it was an excellent system and I complimented them before I left. And I don't know if that kind of thing works here. We would need another person just to kind of be a gatekeeper, make sure that the rules are adhered to. But I thought the way they did it was really good.
Okay. Alyssa, are you back on or did you get dropped?
It's almost looking like that whole thing got dropped. Because it just went really.
Commissioner Kanda, are you still on?
Donna just sent me a text that says, no, she can't hear Tom or Jay only. Alyssa will be all now.
Yeah, I'm getting text messages as well. So hold on. We'll just take a second here. Yeah, Alyssa said we lost everyone, so.
Someone hit speaker. It was turned off.
6854.
Thank you.
Yeah. 940. 104.
Oops.
So we're trying to reestablish teleconference communication, so give us just a minute.
There they are.
Okay, Commissioner Kanda, you back?
Nope, you're back. All five of us out here, we're still here.
Okay. Alyssa, you were speaking, I think, when we lost you. Would you like to continue?
Sure. So I'm not sure what, what's gonna come down from the governor on Monday. So if we could talk about this at the board of health meeting, we might be a little more well informed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
If everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. I mean, we just, I just wanted to get it up on the table and so we could at least try to move forward. I know these folks in these offices are just getting overwhelmed trying to keep up with their regular work and then dealing with the apartment stuff and that sporadic schedule. with the apartment stuff and that sporadic schedule. Go ahead, Commissioner Canada.
Yeah, I would agree. From a commissioner point of view, I think we all need to, I contend to say, we want to open up a courthouse as best we can. And then let's discuss it after, like, let's assess, you know, if the governor's got night guard, and then we can put options out as we go. So I think we all agree, right? We want to open it as best we can.
Yeah, I think what is appropriate, absolutely.
Yeah, I think if we have a good plan, we can do it responsibly, then I think I'm all for it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Then the other thing I wanted to just bring up quickly is today was a scheduled staff meeting day. Commissioner Canada was to preside over that meeting, I think for obvious reasons. We probably would be better off canceling that and scheduling it for next week. Commissioner Prince is nodding his head in concern. Commissioner Canada?
Yeah, I agree. It would be the right thing to do.
Because if you don't agree, you have to be back here by 1:00 to chair that meeting.
I've already heard that yes or that plain enough, yes.
Okay, so I'll ask Karen to send out a quick email, let everybody know that we're not going to have a staff meeting today. Go ahead, Mr. Carter.
What about that June 5 meeting too?
Yeah, good point. Also, wanted to bring up the possibility of canceling the June 5 meeting. I don't think we'll be in any better position to have staff reports again than we are today. So I would move we cancel the BOCC meeting on June 5.
I'll definitely.
Thank you. It's been moved to second to cancel the June 5 meeting. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Canada?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries. We will not have a BOCC meeting on June 5. So, yes, sir. Commissioner Prince?
Thank you, sir. I failed to mention something that is in the works right now. The Tourism Board mentioned to the BOCC a few months ago that they're working on a logo. And we instructed the Tourism Board at the time that they would need to run that through us, the commissioners, before they adopt a new logo for the county. Because it's a tourism logo.
I understand, not through the county, right?
Not through the county, but it's tourism, which is an adjunct of the county. So we felt we need to do that. Deb Adams was absolutely fine with that. That'll be coming down within a couple of days, maybe a week or so. And as soon as I get a handle on the proposal, I will shoot it out to the three of us so that we will have input into that when the time is appropriate.
And that meeting is June 9.
That's correct.
And they changed the location.
That's correct.
It was at West Cliff Town Hall, now it's at Olive Garden West Cliff. So I would recommend some of the commissioners be there anyway.
I'll go to all of them. I'll be at that one, too.
Okay, I was planning on attending as well, so. Thank you, sir.
I understand that's been off beyond the road back. She sent the agenda for that meeting. I'm pretty sure you've all got it.
Say it again, Bill.
She sent the agenda for that meeting.
Yes, that's correct. She did send the agenda, yeah. Okay, that kind of concludes my report. We'll move on. Upper Ark Water report, I have nothing.
If I may...
Go ahead, sir.
They did send out, they being the court, after filing from the Upper Ark's attorney, a motion to approve the committee's report to the court. I thought it was really telling and I hope those who may still be in opposition to the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District's plan for augmentation, that they read what was sent out by Mr. Bergermeister the other day. Because if no action is taken, the court is, in my opinion, will potentially agree to that. And there will be no trial. It will end right there. So I just want to mention that if you are still in a poser, you really need to take some action.
Thank you, yeah. Good point, good point. Anything else, Upper Ark?
Not for me. I was the only woman that I saw as well, saw that.
Attorney Adams?
I'm not sure if they can hear me from back here, but I've done a lot of work regarding the possibility...
How old are you?
Oh, thank you. I've done a lot of work. Well, I'm speaking into a microphone now, so I assume you can hear me. But I, the possibility of creating a special district, a special ambulance district for Eastern Custer County, I had a really good telephone conversation with Ann Terry. She's the executive director of the Special District Association of Colorado. We talked for probably 20 minutes or so. She had some good suggestions. And one of the things I took away is that I think we should have a meeting with Christie Dula because Dula is very involved in special districts. And there's a possibility there might be a grant available to assist in the legal piece for this.
Wow.
So we should pursue that. But we absolutely need to have a meeting with the people on Eastern Custer County who would be affected and get their input. And we need to talk to the hospital district board as soon as we can as well. But there really does need to be a meeting and see if those people will support a bill of, if that's where we go. See if I can read this without my glasses.
Hey, Clint?
Yes.
Looking, did you talk to Christie or did you...
No, I haven't yet. I wanted to report back and suggest that we do talk to Christie. Perhaps, maybe she'll come here and talk with us or meet us in Wetmore or something and talk to us about this. But I think it's a good idea to find out exactly what kind of help. You have some publications online on how to start a special district and service plans and everything through Dula. So I think there's a lot of information, a lot of assistance we can get there. Let's see. Earlier this week, I had a Zoom meeting with the Board of Directors for the Homeowners Association in Buck Mountain. They, I have a woman who worked as a star guide for Derek Skies, who's also the president of that, and he had some questions. And I agreed to answer their questions. And because I have a person not complying with the covenants, but beyond that, there were also several violations of the zoning resolution. So I talked to Jackie about this. And one of them was a shed that was on the property, a 35 acre parcel and a pretty upscale subdivision where the person was living in it and just had a hole dug outside for his bathroom use. And the shed was hauled off the same day I met with the HOA. And Jackie, when I looked in, saw the septic or the sewage violation as well. So she's going to be dealing with the property owner on that. And I believe that's all I have to report.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. You mentioned that there was a homeowners violation. Of course, that's had nothing to do with the county, but the other stuff you mentioned is appropriate.
That's correct. And they clearly understood that, that it, their violations, one of them was a trailer on the property that was visible from other properties and that's prohibited. It's not a zoning violation.
Right.
But apparently the individual couldn't, it's a fifth wheel trailer. He apparently couldn't haul it in. So he got a bulldozer and tried to push it in and just damaged the hell out of it. And now we're, I don't know if they can get it back out of there again. I guess it's a mess, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Administrative assistant, again, with bated breath, I've been patiently waiting.
Yes.
I'm good.
She indicates that she is just fine. That's nothing to bring before the board. Public comment? Okay, if we don't, we will move on. Any unfinished business, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Commissioner Canada? All right, we'll move on. So there's new business. We'll allow public comment prior to taking a vote. Review the vouchers and sign the checks. Gentlemen, we've had an opportunity to look at the vouchers. Any, what's the group's pleasure?
I love that we approved the vouchers for...
I'll second it.
Been moved and second to approve the vouchers for May 2020. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Well, I guess I, just probably for Donna's benefit, if this motion passes, we will initial these. By consent, I would like to say that, or operate under the office, is that she can go ahead and run these with two initials today.
I agree. If it's important, I think we could rubber stamp Commissioner Canada's name on it if we choose to, as we've done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
I can introduce that to all the new ones when I get there, but I think he could stamp them. I've gone through them. They're great.
Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving vouchers, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Canada?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries. Give us a second. We'll initial these and she can move forward with that.
Hey, Jay, what time is that Tourism Board meeting on the night?
Let me look here real quick. 9:00 a.m.
And it's at Olive Garden West Cliff.
Those are in reverse order. And while Commissioner Prince is initiating those vouchers, I would just say that I had reached out to Stephanie Wybarra, our custodian, and asked her to come back to work on a full-time meeting every day, a daily basis, not full-time. It felt like with the continued use or increased use in the courthouse, we probably needed to get into that cleaning a little more. So I had a discussion with her. So she's coming in daily now. It was two days in a row before.
And Tom probably ought to have her do the airport occasionally.
Yeah, that's on her schedule as normal. Okay, next item of business, consideration of membership for the Economic Recovery Task Force. We had asked that Economic Development Committee form that task force and then state their goals and objectives and their plan of work and report back to the BOCC. They have done that through their Economic Task Force Recovery Weekly Meetings or Biweekly Meetings. I'm pulling up a document here. Give me just a second. And so we needed to have a discussion about the membership on that committee. Gentlemen, Mr. Bowles presented us with a list of names of first point of contact, second point of contact. And so if the group wants to take some action on that, now would be appropriate time. And there was some discussion, I guess. I'll open up, Jay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I looked at this document several times. I did not see Jack Canterbury's name on this document. So I know there was some concern about that.
Yeah, he is on line 11. Real estate, item 7.
Pardon?
Item, item 7, line 11, real estate.
Yeah. Oh, maybe, I'm sorry. I, yeah, I forgot to scroll to the right on that document. I was looking at the first page. So he said on line 7 with the real estate contacts, Manny Burt, Bob Sanderhoff, Jack Canterbury. I forgot to scroll clear over to the right on that document. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Quick question. When did he send that? I've got an old one, but I can't, is there a current one that you did send?
No, it was the original one they provided us during Economic Task Force Recovery meeting. But I just didn't realize you have to scroll over that page. It's horizontal and not vertical. So you have to scroll to the right to get the, get the rest of those columns clean.
Ken?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I hate to be negative, but there are two names on this list of folks that I think need further discussion and just rubber stamp approval. I think Mr. Canterbury is one. We have all received since the Public Health Office and Office of Emergency Management got involved in doing their best to protect the county, we've received multiple emails from Mr. Canterbury threatening a lawsuit against the county, calling our public health nurse. Some very inappropriate names, in my opinion, and certainly you have a right to say whatever you choose. And I'm struggling with this because he is a Realtor. He's well-known and most of the time he's a pretty good guy. But I'm having a hard time wanting him to represent the county in recovery after he has been so negative and, in my personal opinion, inappropriate with his threats to the county and his emails regarding public health. So my opinion would be, I would prefer to drop him from this list.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm a little hesitant about approving this list as it's stated as well. Mr. Prince, I believe, is on this list. Let me find out what line that is.
I was going to bring him up separately. He's on line, he's on line 12. He's the West Cliff representative. He is the West Cliff representative on line 12. Excuse me, 32, I can't see.
Thank you. Yeah, I, for the same reasons, I think, that you spoke of earlier, I just struggle with having to take the tongue lashing that I did over the phone and deal with that and then turn around and appoint him as a representative of the county. I just don't think is appropriate. I think we all have to be accountable for our actions regardless of the circumstances. And certainly, I did not appreciate having the F-bomb dropped on me eight or 10 times in a two-minute phone conversation. I just, I just struggle with that as well, so.
If I may, Mr. Commissioner, could I just add on to that? I agree with you regarding Mr. Clint. I don't have a problem with being called names. It seems kind of common lately. What I did object to with Mr. Clint is almost immediately after the public health nurse at Office of Emergency Management said, you cannot congregate as a group, like the next day or the day after that, posted on Facebook, was about 20 people or so, headlined by Mr. Clint, in a group, flagrantly violating the orders. And basically, and this is my opinion, basically thumbing their nose at the authority of the county. And I feel that is absolutely opposed to... And I feel that is absolutely opposed to, in my opinion, having an individual represent the county on recovery who has just flagrantly, flagrantly, and posted on Facebook his opposition to what our Office of Emergency Management Public Health has done. So my recommendation is that Mr. Prince not be approved on this list.
What's the group's pleasure?
I'll meet off here for a sec.
Help yourself.
I couldn't quite hear you say, did you say, did you say that Brian Clint broke the law? What did you, I couldn't quite hear what you said.
Yeah, I sent to you, Commissioner Canada, I sent to you the picture that was posted on Facebook. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I got you now.
Okay, good, I'm trying to yell into my microphone, and I don't want to miss this. I sent to both you and Tom the picture of Brian Clint with a group of, I'm guessing 20 people or so, maybe plus or minus some, who intentionally and flagrantly met to, in their opposition to the do not congregate rule that was out at the time. And I felt personally, if that's the attitude you want to take, you know, that's your opinion, there's, you know, we haven't arrested anybody, given anybody a ticket or done anything negative to anybody who hasn't followed the health orders, but I think the last thing we want to do is give them a place of responsibility to help recover from this unfortunate situation we're in because of this flagrant disregard for the recommendations. And it wasn't just a disregard, it was, it was thumbing your nose at us by posting on Facebook. And of course, that's my personal opinion, may not be shared by the rest.
Go ahead, Commissioner Canada.
Yeah, good, okay, I got you now. All right, well, I have a couple opinions. I tend to agree, you know, you want somebody that can represent the county and represent well. Also, you have to be careful, you know, we don't center First Amendment rights either as a county, and he perfectly has that right to do that, but we certainly have the right to make that a qualification to do that. As far as Jack's concerned, I have the same opinion. However, I look at it a little bit differently, because sometimes it's good to get the energy going and get the really care involved and be part of the team supporting them. And I think Jack is doing that. I know he is, I personally have had some bad things that I had fought when I was in the Air Force about the things that were going on at the time, or even, you know, voting for people who were for, carrying out their constitutional duties. They take all kinds of a run on the show, and we certainly don't want to be looked at as some county that wants to live the right. They need to be good representatives. That's what I thought, but there's a problem, it's too bad that we're in this bind, you know, we hope that all the people we represent are proud to be part of the county and want to do the right thing. And we have gone a long way, my view of leaving the charge as part of county buildings, we have led the charge of our town, which is a good example. I'll leave it at that, just moving to the next step.
Yeah, I guess just one other comment. Spent my professional career trying to instill in my students two things. One, we have to be accountable for our actions. And two, always, one of my mantras was that you can always truly evaluate the, a true person's sense when they're under stress and under duress. And unfortunately, I think we got a true sense of these individuals. Personally, I thought I was friends with both of them, but they made that very clear that that had nothing to do with it. And I get that, politics and friendship don't always line up. But I really appreciated your comment, Commissioner Canada, about the rights of individuals, and in this case, I think that extends to the rights of the commissioners, as you alluded to. I guess people have the right to call me at night and go off on me and do the things that Commissioner Canada talked about on Facebook, and on and on and on, and we have to sit on our hands, I believe, as commissioners, we have the right to exercise our best judgment and do what's right in this county. So I will move that we approve the list of members on the Economic Recovery Task Force as presented, with the exception of Brian Clint and Jack Canterbury.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the list, minus Mr. Canterbury and Mr. Clint. Further discussion?
Yeah, one quick one came across my mind, I just mentioned it, I believe Paul Winkie appointed Brian. He had a good reason to do that, I'm pretty sure he, I hope, was aware of things, but would probably want to be aware of that and why Paul did that.
If I could address that?
Go ahead. Jay have a response for you? Mr. Canada?
Right.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Bill, and I really appreciate your comment, because I too agree, free speech, that's why all three of us got phone calls from Mr. Clint late in the evening, very, very upset about how his business was going to be adversely affected by this. And at the time, he was not particularly polite. That really doesn't bother me, I've gotten some pretty nasty phone calls in my tenure as Commissioner, and I understand people's frustration, and I agree, First Amendment rights give you the right to do that, I'm a First Amendment advocate. It's just their philosophy and the way they're handling themselves, which is, in my opinion, adverse to the county, and they shouldn't be put in a position. But let me answer your question, I'm sorry I went off pontificating, I didn't intend to do that. I believe Mayor Winkie appoint, or asked to appoint or appointed Mr. Clint, because as far as I'm aware, Mr. Clint is the only member of the West Cliff Town Hall, West Cliff trustee, who owns a brick and mortar business. There's one gentleman that owns a B and B business, but Brian is the one who has a brick and mortar business, so, I mean, I think, not being privy to the rest of the information, I think Mayor Winkie did exactly the right thing, but I think we have more information, and in my opinion, we ought to override Mr. Mayor Winkie's recommendation.
Further discussion?
Thanks for that, Jay. We've got one other one here, Tom.
Go ahead.
About Jack Canterbury. Jack has done the same thing, he has, with you all, has gotten after me also, but he also has provided me with a lot, and you all, with a lot of good ideas to consider, to include, for example, the weight in the feed with the dump, and I have to help other people, and the tax issues, and other things. He's got the juices flowing all the time, I'm proud of that, I'm glad of that, because he cycles his energy. The other thing also he pointed out is, he's doing all that, and he's frustrated just like a lot of other business people are, not just, it's just the situation, so, you know, stress does bring out the good and bad in people. But he is, I think, was directing that court, trying to help people. He's, the real estate business, both Bob, I talked to Bob and Jack and other Realtors, the real estate business has been going pretty well for the state at large, and the building up in West Cliff and the valley's been going great, the real estate market's been good. It wasn't because he was hurt, it was because he felt the need from a county point of view for the people that are hurt and are worried, and that's why I still support Jack for this program. I understand the Brian Clint issue, you know, that I would like to consider leaving Jack on person.
Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you, sir. Phil, I agree, we see Jack as an excellent person in the community under both circumstances. His stance on shutting down businesses and social distancing and things like that is certainly his right to feel the way he likes. What really set me off the edge was when he threatened to sue the county for following state law, and that really bothered me a lot, and I felt if his attitude is, he just wants to circumvent what public health and what Office of Emergency Management are recommending, and I just feel that he's inappropriate to be on this committee. But I hear what you're saying, he has been a good addition to our county, has good ideas. I just don't like being threatened with lawsuits because you don't like what our public health and our Office of Emergency Management are saying.
Okay, just one final comment. Commissioner Canada, certainly I feel differently than you do, so I must have had a little different conversation with Mr. Canterbury than you did. I've stated why I feel that they're not appropriate for this, so that would conclude my comments. Further discussion?
Okay. I, you, go ahead.
Public comment? Hearing then will proceed to vote. All in favor of adopting the, or approving the membership list to the Economic Recovery Task Force excluding Mr. Clint and Mr. Canterbury, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Canada?
With regret, aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries. We will carry that message forward to Charles Vogel. All right, next item of business, consideration of the Justice Center RFP bid. We have a single bid, provided copies, the company provided hard copies to us, they were in your mailboxes. What's the group's pleasure? Commissioner Prince, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. To open the discussion, I'm gonna move that we accept the Piper Sandler RFP, actually not RFP, it's their proposal to help with the Justice Center as it was presented to us.
I'll second the motion. Been moved and seconded to accept the proposal from Piper Sandler and Brits for the Justice Center project. In a nutshell, we had asked for RFP or bids to help us reach out to community and find a workable approach to financing a new justice center, and that's what this company does. Twenty-seven, twenty-six page report, read it a couple of times. And just for, I guess, general knowledge, Piper Sandler, I believe, if I understand it right, is really a bonding company, but they are working with Brits as well. So Brits would actually be doing all the hands-on, rubber meets the road work as far as working in the community, and they have priced that out accordingly. And then Piper Sandler, I believe their intent here, as I read it, is to represent us as a bonding agent if, in fact, we move forward. If we do that, then they will be compensated for that, but if we move, decide not to move forward, then we owe Piper Sandler nothing, we would have paid Brits for their work in the community, that's my understanding.
I agree with that after reading it.
Yeah, so, pretty lengthy document, some of it I didn't quite get a real clear understanding on, but we can follow up with that as we move forward, so. Further discussion? Commissioner Prince, go ahead.
Thanks, sir. Just a quick comment, even though we only received one proposal, the proposal we did receive, I felt was excellent. It's not like we're settling on just one, because we only have one. I think what they presented to us was exemplary, and I feel very, very comfortable with them.
That's a great point, you know, the folks that are involved in these kind of activities at state level certainly have no problem with this company either, so. Commissioner Canada, comments?
Nope, they, I'm all for them there, the company, the good RFP.
Great. I struggled for a long time reading this document, I missed it, the reference to a COP, and I kept thinking, well, I can't get, I can't find where they articulate what a COP is. Well, sure enough, it's in there, I just missed it, a certificate of participation, which is part of the whole bonding process when they issue bonds, so. Yeah, I, they've got great recommendations in here, I didn't call any of these folks, but I know Sheriff Byerly has worked with Tom, of course, now that I say his first name, his last name escapes me, that we've been working with out of Denver, has come down and met with us many times on this project, and he's very comfortable with this company as well, so. Further discussion about that, gentlemen? Public comment? Hearing then will proceed to vote. All in favor of, well, I know my mic's cutting in and out, I apologize, all in favor of accepting the proposal from Piper Sandler and Brits, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Canada?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries. I will communicate to Mr. Ekloff that we have accepted their bid, and we will move forward with that, so. All right, thank you, appreciate that, gentlemen. Yes, sir?
Just one last comment for the audience, I just want people to understand that we're paying for this through a grant.
That is correct.
It is not coming out of our tax dollars that have been sent into us. I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
You have underfunded Court Security Commission grant of $30,000, so thank you for bringing that up. Okay, we'll move on. Consideration of the HVAC rooftop units, in this case, rooftop unit bids. Just to give some quick background, I reached out to two local contractors, asked them for, to indicate if they would be interested in submitting a bid on dealing with this rooftop unit. I heard back from one, I reached out to the other one, two different emails, had not, and still have not heard back. So I forwarded you the submitted proposal from one of the contractors. I kind of want to be careful here about throwing out dollar figures in the event somebody else does want to give us a bid on that, so I'd kind of like to keep that. Confidential, thank you, I couldn't get the word until we have made a decision about what we want to do. I met with one of the contractors, talked about the situation, the condensing unit does need to be replaced, we were all pretty sure that was the case, and then we realized that those mixing boxes never really belonged on the roof, they were supposed to be in an attic out of the weather, they have a lot of insulated refrigerant lines to them, so I think that's the plan we probably need to go with, is to get those mixing boxes off of the roof and into the attic, regardless of who does the work. And then the lines that are left up on the roof need to be re-insulated and certainly covered with some piping, PVC piping or something to keep them out of the weather, the sun is just brutal on that insulation material, it's not designed to be out in the elements, so. I know, I just guess I'd like to have some conversation about how you gentlemen want to proceed. I have not reached out to anybody via phone, I just sent emails. Commissioner Prince, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked you, I think it was before the meeting started, because I thought this was relevant, did you give a timeframe for the two companies to respond? And since we didn't have one, I'm not comfortable at all accepting one bid when the second one did not have a deadline. So my recommendation would be that we send the second company another email or a phone call, however you feel is appropriate, and tell them that we need their answer by, and let's pick a day prior to our next meeting. let's pick a day prior to our next meeting, so that we can make that decision and get this thing up and running. It is not appropriate for our employees within the building to not have the benefit of the air conditioning unit and the heating unit. So I'd like to get this moving, but I don't want to do it without having the second person have the appropriate opportunity to bid, but I think we need to give them a deadline so we can move forward.
That's a great point. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, it was an oversight on my part in the beginning not to have done that. I wonder if then we said that, reach out to the second party again and say, we'd like a response by June 4th of whether or not you're interested. If you're interested, we'll give you some additional time to do the research and come up with a bid proposal. I wouldn't expect them to be able to do that in a day or so, so I think, you know, at least if we had June 4th as a deadline to respond to whether or not the person, the company's interested, I think that would be fair. Commissioner Canada, your thoughts?
I think that's fine. We're on the right track.
Okay. I will do that via email by consensus, and are you okay with June 4th, gentlemen?
Aye.
Commissioner Canada?
Yes.
Yeah, and again, that would be a deadline to respond to us to indicate their interest. Is that understood?
Yes.
And then maybe we need a bid by, let me look at my calendar, probably would be smart to include a date there. Oh, how about June 10th? I think that would be adequate, that's almost a week.
When is the next scheduled?
Seventeenth is the BOCC meeting.
Yeah, I think we ought to, I think that would be fine, and let's put it on the agenda for the seventeenth, let's make a decision at that point.
I agree. Commissioner Canada, you all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so by consent, then I will draft an email to the second company and indicate the two deadlines we've talked about, June 4th and June 10th, and then that gives us a chance to digest any information before a meeting on the seventeenth. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, and so, I guess I had made a note to myself on my agenda, consideration of canceling the June 5th meeting. It wasn't on the agenda, it was on my agenda because I put it on there in red, and so I appreciate you bringing that up earlier, yeah. Any additional items?
Yeah, let me, I've got to come back here, so.
Go ahead.
For the record, I've been agonizing over this ever since we had the vote. I do believe that Jack Canterbury and Brian Clintz are good citizens of Custer County, and people do get wound up and wired when they're under the conditions that we are. I think they would just want ahead to be fine as members of that force. So I want with a draw, I am going to vote nay, just for the record. Just to set the record straight, because I've had a lot of experience with leadership, and I've seen people react even under worse conditions than this. I understand both of your arguments, and I support the vote now as the board commissioners vote to.
Okay, so, let's back up a little bit, then the chair would entertain a motion to reconsider that item of business. And let me just explain the process on the motion.
I'll make it right by Robert rules.
Yeah, so the rules pertaining to a motion to reconsider, the maker of the motion to reconsider would have had to vote on the prevailing side, in this case, you did. You voted in favor of the motion that passed, so you have the right to reconsider. Mr. Prince and I also have that right because we all voted in the affirmative. So if you would like to move to reconsider, the chair would accept that motion.
Yeah, I move we reconsider that.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to reconsider the item of business concerning approving the membership list of the Economic Recovery Task Force. Further discussion? Oh, sorry, we'll have to vote on that. All in favor of reconsidering, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Canada?
Aye.
Commissioner Flower? I'll vote aye for the sake of conversation. Motion carries. The motion, the aforementioned motion has been reconsidered, floor is open for discussion.
As I mentioned before, my main point was, you know, I understand the argument that both, Commissioner Prince, Commissioner Flower made. I also have considered my own experience with both gentlemen, and as well as their position in the community, and my thoughts and values, as well as the leadership experience I've had in the past, I think they would have done a good job. I don't think it was appropriate, that we pulled, and I would like to reconsider.
Okay, I'll throw out a comment too. It is my understanding, let me qualify this with the statement, that it is my understanding that Mr. Canterbury no longer owns a real estate company in this county, he sold that business. I believe he is selling real estate out of his home. I realize that this is, that we're getting kind of out into some murky waters. I've had two people say, well, you know, if you move forward with this, it's likely to cost you some votes. Well, I'm up for election this year, I'm not particularly worried about what kind of votes I'm going to lose based on my vote today. I think I have a right to speak my piece and to vote my conscience, that's what I was elected to do. I had to sit and listen to it, and I'm just afraid these gentlemen are going to have to sit and listen to my vote.
Yeah, and I concur. I respect your opinion as well, and I'm in the same way. My conscience and my experience with both people is why I would support over a U.K.
Further discussion on the motion? Further public comment?
This is Melissa.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'd like to just make a couple of comments towards some of the things that Commissioner Canada said earlier. While I agree completely that we need, you know, good energy towards recovering this community, I fully believe that that energy needs to be positive and not negative. And while to most of the public, it might look like Mr. Canterbury and Mr. Clintz's energy is a good thing, I don't believe it is. I feel like it's negative, and I feel like the way that they've told us to handle this, free speech or not, is inappropriate, and should not, they should not be able to represent the county after attacking the county. The other comment I have to that is that Custer County has been leading the charge in opening up and being a little bit more progressive towards opening our economy, but I guarantee you that Jack Canterbury and Brian Clintz have nothing to do with that, nothing. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, get on this whole free speech thing, you know, God almighty, I would love to exercise my right of free speech, even if I'm an elected official, but you have no idea how many times I've shut my trap because it was inappropriate, uncalled for, and unproductive. I'll only go so far with this whole free speech thing, I just, I'd love to sit here and tell Jake Prince what I think of him, but no, I'm teasing. Yeah, so, and that's the first skirt they hide behind, is they jump onto free speech, gives me a right to call you any name I want and tell you what I think of you, and it's not just that. I tried to be thick-skinned through this, after a while you get a little more thin, but it was the comments about the irresponsibility of everybody involved, that we were ruining this county, and so on and so forth. It wasn't just a name calling to me. I can live with it, I don't like it, but I can live with it, but just a total negative approach and certainly counterproductive in my opinion, so. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote.
I think it's a good discussion we've had, thanks, and I appreciate listening, both too.
I appreciate you bringing it up, Phil.
Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the list of membership provided by the, or for the Economic Recovery Task Force provided by Mr. Vogel, with the exception of Mr. Clintz and Mr. Canterbury, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Canada?
Nay.
Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries, two in favor, one against. I will send Mr. Vogel an email letting him know that.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
You bet, no problem. That's why the whole process is supposed to work, just like that. Give me just a second. I didn't think the world could ever have any more acronyms, but now this COVID thing has brought up a whole new thing. ERTF, CCED slash SSC, I mean, oh my gosh, my calendar looks like a roadmap of New Jersey. Anything else to come before the board? Yes, sir. Mr. Prince, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure this is even appropriate.
Speak up, Jay.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Can you hear me a little better now?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, and thanks for reminding me. I know sometimes I don't project as well as I should, I apologize, thank you. I'm still in a quandary as to what the Economic Recovery Task Force will do, what their charge is, when they're going to do it, and what results we're hoping to find. I see lots and lots of names on this list, and I'm still in a quandary as to what is the purpose of the task force? Are they going to go, I don't know, what are they going to do? And then that's, maybe that's a rhetorical question that needs to be brought up later, but every time I look at it, and I go to these meetings, and we talk about everything but what this committee is going to do to help the businesses and the people in this county recover, I'm kind of in a quandary. I think we've spent so much time with organization and getting it up and running, but I have no idea of the direction, so I'm going to, I'll show, but that's my concern.
Jimmy, I echo that. You've heard me in these meetings ask them what the heck they're doing, and why aren't we getting those people that have volunteered out there on the streets doing something? All I've heard is talk about so far is looking for grants, looking for money to hand out.
And I agree with you, Commissioner, in fact, Jack Canterbury, and I agreed with him completely when he said, this thing's been going on for several weeks now, what in the world are you guys doing? And I agreed with that comment. So when I tell you, you know, I'm not opposed to Jack Canterbury, I just felt his actions shouldn't be on the committee, but his point was very well taken. Come on, let's get something going, if it's going to get going, and then the question is, if you're going to get going, what in the world are you going to be doing? So that's, so I'm with you, Phil.
I don't know why the people on that list aren't out there helping people like in the ag business, fill out the forms to get whatever support they need, or whatever, you know, or the churches working within the, get the health department in there to get them certified, all those kinds of things, where are they? I don't know where they've been.
Yeah, I think, and so, I know you both have alluded to that during our Economic Recovery Task Force meetings, I think that's a pointed question we need to ask again. I share the same sentiment. I thought probably it was going to be a little more hands-on than what it has appeared to be to this point. My suggestion would be at our next ERTF meeting is to ask, go down that list and say, can you tell us what person A has done, who they've talked to, what did person B do, so on and so forth, and try to get a little deeper into the weeds. I think that would be the fair thing to do, so. My sense was, it seemed like from the protracted conversations we've had, that the direction was to go see if there were available grants, and I thought it was going to be a little more hands-on locally than that, but let's have that conversation again in our next ETRF meeting. Is that reasonable?
Satisfied with this, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, good point, thanks, Jerry. Okay, any public comment?
I've got one.
Go ahead, sir.
Can I have a microphone?
Attorney Smith, yes, we will give you a microphone.
I just wanted to state, Jay had asked me at the beginning of the meeting and prior to it, that an email inquiry he got about constitutional rights of people, and I'd like to answer this for everybody at large, the question of the police power of the state versus the individual's constitutional rights. And when I talk about the state, I'm talking about the federal government and the state of Colorado, the government, the state government, because counties are political subdivisions of the states, and counties in a lot of areas take their marching orders from the state, and especially with the public health orders that have come out. The county public health agency is not free to do whatever it wants, it has to follow directives that come from the state. The ultimate issue here is balancing the police power of the state. When I mean police power, I don't mean going out necessarily arresting people, but to infringe on constitutional rights to some extent during an emergency, and that has been recognized by law. And this is a balancing test that's going to ultimately be decided by the courts. There are already court actions going on now challenging the right of the state of Colorado and the local public health agencies to impose certain restrictions on people, and I don't have an answer for that, that's for the courts to decide, but that's for the benefit of everybody who's raising this question as we go along, and it's a very legitimate question, and I await the answer as well as everybody else.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, I've had numerous phone calls and emails from individuals that thought either the public health agency or the Board of County Commissioners were making all the decisions on our own, and I was trying to be quick to point out, we are following the guidelines and the orders from the state of Colorado, which we are a political subdivision of that, so I appreciate your input, thank you.
Speak into the mic, did they?
Yeah, I will cut out, I'll be so. As my dad used to say right before he'd give his six boys a whip, "Speak now, forever hold your peace," if you have any other public comments. My liberty only goes so far, doesn't it? Hearing none, last?
This is Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
This is Cindy Flower.
Oh, nice to hear from you.
You're welcome. I wanted to point the attention of the commissioners to the new Recovery Operations Center Manager and Unified Command, the new chart that she just sent out. I'm sure that she sent it to you as well.
Absolutely.
And there's a Recovery Task Force circle that I think will answer some of the questions of what their job is, and I'll read them to you. The first one is assess economic damages, the second one is develop grant writing workshops, the third one is develop accounting workshops, and the fourth one is create programs to assist local businesses recover. That's just some of what the Recovery Task Force has decided to do.
Thank you. Yes, we did receive and had a conversation about that new organizational chart for the ROC, your points well taken, and maybe we include that in our discussion at the next ERTF meeting and see what's being done with that. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, thank you.
Other public comment?
It's jamming, I don't know that way adjourned.
Thank you, there was a kind of awkward pause there for a minute, wasn't there? I'll second the motion.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded adjourned, all in favor, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Canada?
Aye.
And reluctantly, Commissioner Flower votes aye.
Have a safe trip back home.
The motion's carried, the meeting is adjourned.